Hi, everybody. I'm Nicole Vulcan, editor of the Source Weekly. Why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Phil Chang. I'm running for Deschutes County Commissioner.
Tell us why you're running, Phil.
I have benefited for the last 16 years from Deschutes County being a great place to live, work, play, raise a family, and I want to make sure that it continues to be a great place to live, work, play, and raise a family, even as Central -- as Deschutes County, Central Oregon changed dramatically before our eyes. As you may know, Deschutes County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation, and if we don't grow well, housing affordability will decline, traffic congestion will get worse, and we will -- infrastructure will fall farther and farther behind, and we'll lose a bunch of open space and habitat in the process. So growing well, thoughtful growth, is a really big part of why I wanted to run this race, and then when I got in, COVID hit, and that has brought a tremendous amount of focus to the role that the county plays in keeping people healthy and safe. So the county has a huge role to play in COVID response and containment and recovery, and I've also been learning about the very important role that the county has to play in providing mental health services that let us transform the way that law enforcement works, and also really helping our youth in our community to deal with the stresses and trauma that they face, to deal with things like pressures to use and abuse substances, to deal with suicidal ideation, things like that, and very importantly, to try to change the social climate in our schools for our kids.
Thanks. So we're going to -- you covered a lot of ground, and we'll come back to a lot of that, what you mentioned. So the county has -- county commissioners come into contact with a lot of different people from different walks of life. So give me an example of some -- of a time you worked with someone ideologically opposed to your personal views to come up with a policy solution that satisfied all the parties involved.
Right. It's been my job for many years to be the person in the middle of collaborative dialogue and to try to bring people together. So if I go into a situation trying to be the neutral facilitator, then it's not -- I'm not necessarily facing someone who has a different position from me, but I think the best example of me being in the mix in a situation like that is working to build the Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project, the forest collaboratives that help us do the work that we need to get done in the national forests, you know, it's pretty smoky back there right now, to do the work that we need to get done in the national forests, to reduce wildfire risk to our communities, to reduce high severity wildfire, you know, how much high severity wildfire we have, and to improve habitat, and to keep a supply of forest products going to our industry and maintaining a bunch of jobs in the woods. So I was right in the middle of bringing the timber industry, the environmentalists, the firefighters, the recreationists, local governments, and other entities together to build that project, to build that group, and to hammer out agreements so that we could tell the federal government, "We all agree this is what needs to happen in these national forests, and if you do this common sense program of, you know, thinning small and medium-sized trees, mowing the forest, prescribed burning it to achieve all those benefits, he's not going to sue you, he's not going to drag you through the mud in the newspaper, he's not going to try to get Congress to take away your budget, and we will all support you in doing that work." And the Deschutes Collaborative has been incredibly successful. They've gotten, you know, over 100,000 acres of treatments done, right in the zone between Blackberry Ranch and Sisters and Sun River wrapping around Ben.
Excellent. So you mentioned COVID. We're taking extra precautions, having our interviews outside and doing the masks. What's your perspective on the county's handling of the COVID crisis?
Yeah, so I have a, you know, it's sort of like a two-layer answer to that because the county staff has been doing a tremendous job. The, you know, the county is where the contact tracers are located, and they have been doing a great job of tracking people down who've been exposed and getting them to self-isolate. The county environmental health staff has been helping, you know, restaurants and salons and other businesses to reconfigure their spaces so that they can reopen safely. So county staff are doing, you know, great work, you know, the collection of data and the analysis of trends, all good stuff. Where we've had problems is with the leadership of the county. The county commission did not take COVID seriously for at least the first three months of the pandemic. You know, Commissioner Henderson, you know, at an event in Redmond really early on said to people, "I don't know how seriously we need to take this," and then proceeded to, you know, at that event, you know, not model personally responsible behaviors like wearing a mask. The county commission at one point came this close to passing a local religious gathering ordinance or order which would have defied the governor's restrictions on group sizes, you know, overall within Phase 1, to allow much larger groups to gather for religious purposes, until, you know, they were really close to passing that until, you know, Commissioner DeBohne got the group to wait for the weekend, and then they got a flood of pushback from religious leaders, you know, pastors and other religious leaders from all over the county saying, you know, "We don't want you to do that," and so they backed down, and then like within two weeks, we had that massive pandemic outbreak or the outbreak in the Pentecostal church in LaGrande. And so if our county had passed this order allowing very large religious gatherings, and then that had occurred just, you know, less than two weeks later, you know, how silly would we have looked? So this commission has not taken containment of COVID seriously. They have been very serious about reopening and trying to, you know, kind of ride the county staff to make sure, you know, "Are we hitting this reopening requirement criteria? Are we hitting this criteria? Are we hitting this criteria?" Really, really riding on that, pushing for reopening without taking seriously what needs to happen to contain COVID so that we can reopen effectively and long-term. And I would, you know, I'm not an epidemiologist, but I would say that if our commission had been doing things from the very beginning, like promoting those personal responsibility behaviors, masks, space, hand sanitation, and just monitoring yourself for symptoms and isolating as needed, maybe the spike, the huge spike in cases that we had in July wouldn't have been as big. And who knows? We might even be in a position right now where my kid could go back to school in person in September. But we did have that huge spike in July, and I think that not taking COVID seriously and not promoting the behaviors that are needed from all of us to contain COVID was a huge mistake.
Another topic that's related to public health, should the county do more to fund public and behavioral health, and what would you do differently with that department in the coming years?
Yeah, the county should absolutely do more to fund public and behavioral health, and in the last two years, the population of Deschutes County has increased by 5%, while general fund investment in the Health Services Department has decreased by 6%. As a result of that, we have less capacity to manage COVID, and we're straining our contact, you know, the people who are contract tracing and doing that kind of work. We have less capacity to do things like open, get the Crisis Stabilization Center open. You know, these commissioners have taken a lot of credit for the opening of the stabilization center, but the dirty little secret is that the Crisis Services Group within the Behavioral Health Department has gotten zero additional funding in the last couple of years, even as they've been trying to stand up this Crisis Stabilization Center. So the commission says, "Oh, you know, we're supporting the stabilization center because they're still paying this, you know, paying the salaries of a couple of staff that they were paying for before," but they have done nothing to help accelerate the opening of that facility that is providing such important services to our community. And that is the reason why it took six years from the initial decision to open the Crisis Stabilization Center, to actually get it open. So there's an example. The county just denied a Behavioral Health Partnership proposal from the Bend-Lupine School District in May. So the Budget Committee, which consists of the three commissioners plus a couple of appointed members, they, the school district came to them, said, "Hey, your behavioral health people are great. They provide us all this technical assistance. For example, they're the ones we call as soon as, you know, like when an attempted suicide happens, they're the people we call to help us, you know, deal with the fallout and pick up the pieces." So the school district said, "We appreciate your behavioral health specialists so much. We actually would like to embed one in each of our high schools. We'll pay half the cost of it, and this will help us tackle escalating youth suicide rates. We have some of the highest youth suicide rates in the state in Deschutes County. This will help us, you know, deal with escalating youth substance abuse rates, and this will help us improve the social climate in our schools to make them healthier, more positive places for our kids." And the county Budget Committee would not even consider the proposal. Commissioner Adair, to her credit, she made a motion to vote on that proposal, and she supported it, and not a single other member of the Budget Committee would second her motion so that they could vote on it. Their attitude was basically, "Not our job. If the school wants behavioral partner, behavioral health specialists, they can pay for it themselves," ignoring the fact that the real expertise within our community is already in the county Health Services Department. So those are a couple of examples of places where we could invest more in health services if we were putting more into our general fund, more of our general fund into the Health Services Department.
So your opponent mentioned, I've already had an opportunity to meet with him, that some of those funds that were not used, some of those funds instead of being, coming from the general fund for the behavioral health were coming out of grants?
Yes.
I don't know if you want to comment upon that because it sounded like he wanted, you know, he framed it as then they were able to maintain the level, the same level of service with grants.
Right, yes. So Commissioner Henderson would love to, I don't know if he would love, Commissioner Henderson will let these great Health Services Department staff offer these services and offer these programs if someone else will pay for it, essentially. But, you know, my question is, you know, is the mental and physical health of our residents the responsibility of the county or not? If it's the responsibility of the county, then the county should invest in those services. If it's not our job, then you can tell your people, you know, like with the Crisis Stabilization Center, like, you know, "Take your tin cup and go around and ask for everybody else to pay for these services." The other problem with that model of other people's money to run our health services programs is a lot of these grant programs have match requirements, so it's very difficult to, it's very difficult to get the grant unless you, unless you, you know, have some foundational funding. It's very hard to research and write grant proposals unless you have some foundational funding. So an expectation or a model where we have completely externalized the funding, you know, like we rely completely on external sources for the funding to run our Health Services Department, doesn't allow us to do nearly as much kind of discretionary prevention-type work. It's a short-sighted approach, and I would say, you know, that the attitude there is like, "Oh, I'm being fiscally responsible and saving the taxpayers' money." We're all federal taxpayers too, so I mean, if those funds to provide those services are coming from the state, are coming from the federal government, and they are, in certain ways, less good services because there's, you know, all the transaction costs of money coming from Fed to local, then as taxpayers, we should be irritated that we're not just doing, you know, doing what we should take personal responsibility to do locally and trying to get the feds to pay for it.
Inevitably, with the COVID situation, the economy is going to be affected and has already been affected, and that includes public budgets. So what is your approach to the, would be, what would be your approach to the county budget with the fallout from the economic situation?
Yeah. The county budget has many parts, and the COVID impacts affect some parts much more than others. Like the fairgrounds, they're taking it in the shorts, and the road department, you know, got, like, when we were all at home, I mean, now people are getting out and about more, but when we were all at home, gas tax revenues went way down. So there's specific places in the county budget that we will need to, we will need to pay attention to. It's, even though this year, you know, maybe in, you know, if we experience a significant economic downturn, it's possible that the collection rates for property taxes will be less, you know, like if 90% of the people are paying their taxes instead of 95%, that's a hit. But at the same time, we have had so much growth in numbers of properties and in assessed value of property, you know, particularly as new properties get added on and they're not, the rate of increase of assessed value isn't as constrained as it is for longer-term property owners. The property, it seems like the property tax collections are still going to be pretty robust. So there's a lot of county functions where I don't see it being as big of an issue as in a couple of key places, you know, like fairgrounds, roads, you know, the environmental health folks, they collect permit fees from, you know, the restaurants and other businesses that they're supposed to inspect, but they haven't, they haven't been collecting adequate permit fees to even, you know, really run their department already anyway. So, you know, we've been having to subsidize that already. So in, there's, we need to look at some very specific places in the county budget that you need to shore up, you know, shore up some issues. But the kind of general message that, the general message like, "Oh, you know, COVID means extreme fiscal austerity for all of us," is, like, I'm not sure whether, I'm not sure if that's, you know, for certain departments, whether that concern is not is not being exaggerated right now.
Okay. You mentioned the stabilization center, and I just was curious, what's your take on the status of it overall at this point in time, kind of a reframing of what you already might have mentioned?
Yeah. Well, I mean, so I talked about kind of the opening and the financing of it, but the stabilization center itself is a really exciting thing for our community. This is a place where people who are having, you know, mental health crises can come, get some respite, you know, get themselves calmed down and sorted out. This is a place where law enforcement officers can bring the people that historically they were bringing to the emergency room or taken to jail, and in a very short period of time, you know, 10 minutes, get in there, drop somebody off, and then be back out on the street doing their job that's appropriate for someone who carries a gun to be doing. So like, it's a great thing. We are up to 24/7, you know, we will be up to 24/7, seven-day-a-week operation very soon, thanks for, thanks to very large federal grants, but also, I mean, there's federal money, there's state money, there's the Central Oregon Health Council is invested in that, the City of Bend Police Department invested in the facility. So again, in my opinion, the county staff was forced to go around with their tin cup and get everyone else to pay for this, this very needed facility that's also very fiscally strategic. I mean, this saves us money. Like that law enforcement officer that historically had to sit in the ER for four hours, average of four hours, with someone who was having a mental health crisis, only, you know, 70, only to see three-quarters of the time that person get just sent right back out on the street because they were not mentally ill enough to be admitted for treatment at the hospital? What a waste. So it's, in my opinion, fiscally short-sighted that the county did not invest more in getting this facility up and running sooner. So that's, I guess that's kind of my take on where it's at right now. It's a great, it's a great project. It's great that it's going to be open 24/7, 70s, you know, 24/7 soon. I just wish it had been open sooner and that the county had taken a lead partner role in the job instead of basically telling everyone else that they needed to pay for it and then trying to take the credit for it later on.
It certainly plays into the conversation around defunding the police, which is quite well-timed, I guess.
Absolutely, yeah. And kind of along the same lines with that, the Mobile Crisis Assessment Team that the county runs, that is, similarly, it is a place where we can invest in mental health resources so that we do not need as many person hours of law enforcement officers as we do. And I mean, I'm not advocating for eliminating jobs, you know, at the sheriff or at the Bend Police Department, but as our community continues to grow, as the number of calls, you know, that people need to respond to continues to grow, if you can have more mental health specialists responding and over time, then maybe you don't have to add more officers in the next year or two years or three years.
Absolutely. Switching gears, what's your perspective on the conflict over marijuana and land use in Deschutes County?
So this is an issue that the county commission has put back on the ballot, so we will have, all of us as Deschutes County voters will have a direct opportunity to weigh in on that issue in November, and at the end of that process, that ballot measure process, whatever the will of the voters is, is what the county should do. I do believe that this commission has been resisting the will of the voters from the 2014 vote on Measure 91, and in the process of resisting the will of the voters has been costing us a lot of time and time and money. I heard recently about the Wave Seer case, that Luba just, the Land Use Board of Appeal just came back to the county for the second time and said, you know, "You're not doing reasonable regulation," and, you know, this time basically ordered the county to give these people a permit. And how much, how much attorney time, how much staff cost, how much commissioner time have we spent prosecuting this issue that, you know, clearly state law says we've been in the wrong on? And, you know, how, you know, do the taxpayers appreciate their resources being used to pursue that kind of, I mean, I would call it frivolous litigation in some ways.
Thanks. Being a county commissioner is a full-time job and is, unlike the city council, is paid a full-time salary. Do you own or operate any other business that would detract you from that commitment?
I resigned my state job at the end of December. I have been doing consulting, consulting work this year, and I am ready to, you know, cleanly halt that work at the end of 2020 if, you know, if I'm elected commissioner and dedicate myself 100% to this job of commissioner.
Another shift of gears, affordable housing, you mentioned. We know as residents that to be an ongoing issue for a lot of people. How can the county commission support the development of more affordable housing? And I guess the side part of that is within the bounds of Oregon law.
Right. Within the bounds of Oregon law. That is a good, that is a good distinction to make. I want to give two responses to that. On the one hand, the county sits on this tremendous resource and asset, which is, you know, thousands of acres of county land. Hundreds of those acres are within the UGBs of the City of Lupine and the City of Redmond. And we saw a great project called Skyline Village where the county donated 40 acres of land to a 485-unit housing project or, you know, development. Half of those units, 242 units, are going to be deed-restricted affordable housing for people who make 80% or lower than the, you know, average median income for Redmond. So the county can use its land to, for affordable housing projects, mobile home parks, you know, transitional housing, temporary housing, you know, for homeless people, you know, combined with services to get them back on their feet. So there's a whole realm of things the county can do there. In the realm of land use, the county has, one of the things the county has been doing has been, is pursuing the rezoning, the reclassification of, you know, thousands of acres of land that are exclusive farm use zone classified now. They were told early on in their process that you're way overreaching with what you're trying to do here, and so they scaled their, they scaled their reclassification effort on these, they call them non-prime resource lands, back to about, you know, six key spots, and that is wanting to change the zoning in those six, I call them legacy residential areas, I think is actually appropriate because they're places that were parcellized pretty, you know, they were, they were broken up into very small lots, you know, and some of, in some of these places, half the lots are already built out, like two-acre, two-acre lot with a house. So, you know, somebody clearly intended these to be residential areas back in the day, and, but they were, you know, the county planning staff might describe it as, you know, mapping errors. So those, those couple of areas, I think it's appropriate to look at moving those into a different classification over time. Whether, you know, what that is, I'm not sure, and whether the county has been approaching it the right way or not is another question, because it looks like the challenge that they've sent up to the state level on those non-prime resource lands also looks like it's probably going to, we're going to lose, you know, and have spent a tremendous amount of legal resources pursuing that as well. But I guess, so that's kind of like getting into the nitty-gritty, but at the really high level, I would say Commissioner Henderson is promoting a vision of rural, new rural subdivisions all over the place, rural sprawl. And what we really need to do to, we absolutely need to build thousands of more homes because we know how many people are coming here. But the right, there's a right way and a wrong way to do that, and the right way to do it, working within Oregon land use law, is to do orderly expansions of urban growth boundaries with planned growth where you can push cities to grow up and grow in as well as, you know, growing out in a orderly, planned, thoughtful way that is smart for infrastructure, smart for transportation planning, and encourages us to use our precious land efficiently. With, you know, tens of thousands of people coming, you know, in the We, with, you know, tens of thousands of people coming, you know, in the next decade, we can't, we can't afford to use this, the precious land that we have inefficiently. We have to use it efficiently, and that means that we will need to have some, you know, small land footprint, you know, housing mixed in with the single-family homes that we build in the future. cottages, duplexes and triplexes and townhouses and tiny homes and, you know, also multifamily housing.
What's your take on the county's role in supporting a planned camp for houseless folks?
Are you talking about the Veterans Village or?
Not the Veterans Village, but the, there's a, you know, another conversation with the City of Bend. I think the county's involved with that as well, finding some land to have a planned camp for non-veterans and people who experiencing homelessness right now.
I think the idea of, I think the idea of the county using its land resources to create transitional housing for homeless people is a great idea. And, you know, to go to the Village, the Veterans Village concept, I mean, the idea, you know, the basic idea there, tiny homes in a cluster with centralized services, you know, showers and a kitchen, and, you know, like a meeting, meeting space for people to get, you know, counseling or health services or job training or job matching to get them on their feet. And we've seen the success of that Veterans Village model in Clackamas County, where their Veterans Village has been up and running for like a year and a half, and they've already tracked people through there onto jobs and permanent housing and other things.
What, if anything, would you change about the management of the county fair? And I guess this was framed specifically around the COVID, you know, the shutdown of the fairgrounds due to the COVID situation.
Yeah. The fairgrounds, COVID has definitely had an impact this year, but they didn't have a, like financially, they didn't have a great year last year either. This despite the fact that, yeah, that Central Oregon, Deschutes County is a place where lots of people come. So the question is like, you know, how do we, how do we fix that disconnect between massive amounts of visitor and tourist activity coming to Deschutes County, but the fairgrounds not really capturing that? And I think that there are, you know, the kinds of facilities that they have to offer could be changed to offer a wider range of, you know, to have a wider range of different kinds of events, you know. I've heard people talking about sporting, you know, like major, major sporting events, you know, having that kind of stuff at the fairgrounds. So I, I think that's the real question is how do you match the asset that you have or, you know, retool the asset that you have to capture more of the visitation and tourism and, you know, event-type activity that a growing community will produce?
Getting pretty close to the end of our questions. So Planning for Thornburg Resort is in full swing with more of these types to follow, it seems. What are your thoughts on those types of developments and the role of the county to prevent or support them?
Right, right. So, you know, my, my understanding of Thornburg is that the permits were issued, you know, a long time ago, more than a decade ago, and that, you know, if they meet their milestones within their, you know, their work milestones within their permit, then they are, they are set to, you know, continue to build out. I know that there's some people who are still working on the water use plan and, you know, hoping that they can have, they can have the Thornburg Resort have a more water-efficient destination resort. And I, you know, I think that would be great. I don't know if the county actually has any leverage to require that, but I think, I think, you know, more water-efficient destination resorts are great. Moving forward, it's my understanding that the, in the destination resort legislation, destination, you know, once a municipality reaches 100,000 people, there's essentially a moratorium on new destination resorts within 25 linear miles of there. So this may be like a, you know, unless someone changes the law, which, you know, people have worked on in the past with destination resorts, this may be like a, you know, Thornburg may be the last of, you know, the last new large major destination resort. I do also know though that in the recent housing, housing strategy, work that's been done at the county, there are buildable lands, you know, buildable properties within all of the existing destination resorts that we have. Even Blackbeet Ranch has like a handful of, of open, you know, buildable, you know, buildable lots. But, you know, places like, you know, Pronghorn have like hundreds, and, you know, Caldera up by, up by Sun River. So there's, I mean, while, you know, while a kind of cap on new large destination resorts may, you know, may concern some people, I would say that, you know, if, you know, with, if Thornburg goes forward and with those, you know, several, you know, hundreds of available lots in existing destination resorts, you know, there's still a lot of opportunity for someone who's seeking that kind of residential experience moving forward.
So you say like for someone to go live there as opposed to more of the vacation-style home? I mean, they're kind of the same home.
Or, I mean, yeah, they could, they could, they could buy that property and they could build their, their second home there too.
Mm-hmm. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to bring up anything that we didn't bring up that's important to you in this campaign.
Yeah. I guess, you know, I would love to just share, you know, a little bit of, you know, a little bit of my vision.
Great.
I believe with the right leadership, we can have effective public and behavioral health services that keep our community healthy and thriving. I believe that we can have thoughtful growth that makes housing more affordable, that contains traffic congestion, and that preserves the open space, as much of the open space and habitat in our community as possible that make Deschutes County special. I believe we can have well-maintained roads that help us get where we're going. I believe we can have sustainable waste management. That's something that we didn't talk about.
Oh, yes.
But the county just passed a, you know, just approved a, a new solid waste management plan to govern our, our waste management going forward that has a lot of really innovative waste diversion strategies to extend the life of our landfill and push out the date where we're going to have to dig another $14 million hole in the ground. So that's a, and Commissioner Henderson really dragged that process out, resisted a lot of the diversion strategies in there. And, you know, finally, I do believe, even though the commission doesn't directly oversee law enforcement and community justice, they have a, they have an important role through the power of the purse, the budgeting, and also through controlling the numbers of full-time employees. They have, they have a role to play in the sheriff's office, in the court, at the district attorney's office. So I believe we can have a, you know, criminal justice and community justice system that keeps us all safe and also is more restorative in nature, you know, that rehabilitates people and redeems people.
Mm-hmm. Thanks so much. Anything else you want to add before we conclude?
Can I tell people what my website is?
Yeah, of course. And, yeah, I mean, you have shared a little bit about why people should vote for you, but that's sort of my last thing is let people know why they should vote for you and how they can engage with you.
Yeah. So that's a little bit of my vision of what we can, you know, what I would like to accomplish as a Deschutes County commissioner. I believe I'm the right person for this job because I have a long track record of bringing people together and to collaborate and partner. I believe that I, I know Deschutes County from the rural to the urban. You know, I've lived in Bend for 16 years, but my work has been in the forests, in, in the irrigation canals of the community. So farmers and forestry contractors, I, you know, I know the full spectrum of life experiences and, you know, economic activity in this community, and I want to help bring those people together so that we can have a great future for all of those people. I know how government works. So I've been a public servant for 16 years, so at the local and federal and state level, so I know how to get stuff done within government and make it work for us. I'm not a, I'm not a, you know, shrink government until it's small enough you can drown it in a bathtub type person. I actually want to, I want to make it work. And then finally, I see myself as someone who is both fiscally responsible but also fiscally strategic, who sees the opportunities to make important investments that will save us money in the long run, save us money and also save us, you know, have better outcomes. I mean, not investing in mental health is basically buying yourself a whole lot of suffering in the future. And it's also not fiscally smart because you, you know, you don't invest in the mental health of our children, you're going to be picking up the pieces from broken people later on and, you know, later on, and that is going to cost us a whole lot of money. So those are, those are the reasons I, I think I'm the right person for this job. And, yeah, I will, I'll give people my, my website is votphilchang.com, and I would love to talk with anyone else who wants to, you know, hear more or discuss any other issues.
Thanks so much for contributing to our democratic process and for being with us today.
Thank you, Nicole. I really appreciate this opportunity to interview with you today.